Okay, let's, let's begin. Good evening. This is a regular, regular scheduled meeting of the Princeton Zoning Board of Adjustment being held electronically by Zoom on December 11th, 2024, at 7:30 PM. Pursuant to Section 13 of the Open Publics Meetings Act, adequate notice of the time and place of this meeting has been post, has been prominently posted, posting, by, given by prominently posting the sunshine notice of the Princeton Zoning Board of Adjustment. Such notice has been placed on the official bulletin board at the municipal complex and by transmitting a copy of the notice to the Princeton Packet Town Topics, The Times, Trentonian, and by filing a copy with the Clerk of Princeton on December 6th, 2024, and has been posted to the municipal website, wwwprincetonnj.gov/meetings. Pursuant to the extension of the ongoing state of emergency by Executive Order 292, in accordance with the Emergency Remote Public Meeting Protocol for local public bodies to conduct a public meeting without physical attendance by members of the public, notice that during this extension of the state of emergency, all regular and special meetings of the Princeton Zoning Board of Adjustment will be held electronically via Zoom, was transmitted to the Princeton Packet Town Topics and The Times, and was filed with the Clerk of Princeton on the 24th day of April, 2020. Such notices have been placed on the official bulletin board at the municipal complex and on the Princeton website, and are to be maintained throughout the year, and by transmitting a copy of same to the Princeton Packet Town Topics, The Times, Trentonian, Comcast Media, and by filing a copy thereof with the Clerk of Princeton. Notices have been placed on all window doors of the municipal complex. Okay. Claudia, can you call the roll, please?
Ms. Chen?
Here.
Ms. Coulson?
Here.
Mr. Floyd?
Here.
Mr. Schreiber?
Here.
Mr. Tenenbaum?
Here.
Mr. Stein?
Here.
Ms. Donna?
Yes.
Chairman Cohen?
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, we have, we have resolutions this evening. Let's see, what do we have first? Do we, we have, I guess our open public meetings protocol, is that the 2025 annual meeting calendar?
Correct.
Okay. Do we have that yet?
It should be the, yes, the res, there were resolutions in the package.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
To approve the 2025 schedule, notice of special meetings and charges for subscribers who want to get copies in advance of agendas, et cetera.
Okay, do we wanna, do we wanna, do we vote on this?
Yeah, I think we should vote, yes.
We'll take these individually?
Yes.
Okay, so let's, has everybody reviewed the schedule? If there are any questions, let's discuss it. If not, we, someone needs to make a motion to pass it or not?
So moved.
Okay. Thank you.
Are we doing it as package or individually?
Individually.
Yeah, individually.
Okay.
Wait, Claudia, can you call the roll, please?
Oh, it's not a package? No?
No.
Okay, Ms. Chen?
Yes.
Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Schreiber?
Yes.
Mr. Tenenbaum?
Yes.
Ms. Stein? Mr. Stein?
Yes.
Chairman Cohen?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, the next is the notice of special meetings, once again. If you've reviewed it and if somebody would like to make a motion.
I most, make a motion to approve special.
Thank you. We have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you.
Ms. Chen?
Yes.
Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Schreiber?
Yes.
Mr. Tenenbaum?
Yes.
Mr. Stein?
Yes.
Chairman Cohen?
Yes.
Thank you.
And our last is the changes for the subscribers for agenda, agenda mailings. Again, in your packets, if someone would like to make a motion.
I'll move the charges.
Thank you.
I'll second it.
Thank you. Claudia?
Ms. Chen?
Yes.
Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Schreiber?
Yes.
Mr. Tenenbaum?
Yes.
Mr. Stein?
Yes.
Chairman Cohen?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, we have four resolutions this evening. The first is case number Z24-460, 760 Mount Lucas Road, Block 2701, Lot 19. Again, these have been.
Board members, before you move ahead with a motion to approve, after I prepared this and had it sent out to you, a question was raised as to whether the board was approving all four variances that the applicant requested, or whether it was only two variances. And initially, that was my understanding because of this application at two hearings. At the first hearing, the applicant's engineer had advised that they were willing to dispense with two of those variances, that they could make adjustments. But then, at the second meeting, when you listen to the tape, you could certainly conclude that, in fact, the board was approving all four variances. So, I did confer with Mr. Berger on this, that's his understanding, and so I wanted to raise it with you tonight. And the two, the two variances that the applicant had said they might be able to dispense with was for the side parking setback, 4.75 foot, that's what they were looking for, five feet is required, and the driveway width, 22 feet is required, but they wanted 30 feet for the driveway width to the ADU, and 25 feet for their parking space turnaround. So, what, what is the board's pleasure?
Yes, Michael?
Yeah, my observation, you know, because I questioned that too, especially because your introductory whereas on page four said that we partially granted and partially.
Right, so.
Not. But then, when you got to the back, there was no, no specification of what we denied. But that being, that caused me to go look at the tape, and the tape, to me, clearly, we approved all four.
Okay, well, I mean, so it wouldn't have been a denial because they, my understanding is they had withdrawn two of them and said, that's okay. You know, we don't need them. But I agree with you.
Yeah, there was discussion of Steve's, Schreiber's motion on whether we were doing two or four, and it was resolved that we were doing all four. Steve, Steve confirmed it in his motion.
Okay.
Yep.
So, then.
We are, we approved all four. Yep. Is my.
The resolution will be amended, will make clear in paragraph five of the findings and also in the, now therefore, at the end, that all four of the variances they were seeking were approved.
And I, I would suggest that at the top of page four, in the whereas where you reference, we partially deny that that be revised.
Yeah.
Thank you, Michael.
Yeah.
I have, it's a very minor type of graphical point, but there are two instances, one on page, on number three on page one, where the address has a small lowercase t in front of the. Is that deliberate, or was that?
No. It's not deliberate.
Okay, well, that occurs on page one and also on page four in item two. So, it's, you know, silly, but what that, that's corrected.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you, George. Yes, Donna?
Karen, I think I voted on this. And I'm not listed.
Okay, so.
I'm not, also not listed as absent, and I do see that I voted on other October 23rd.
Then you're correct.
Okay.
Then we'll add you then.
Okay, thanks.
Right, right.
Thank you, Donna. Any other comments? If someone would like to make a motion. Now, we can vote on this this evening, Karen? Okay. Okay, someone would like to make a motion?
I'll move to approve.
Thank you. We have a second?
I'll second, starting.
Thank you, George. Okay, Claudia, can you call the roll?
Ms. Chen?
Yes.
Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Schreiber?
Yes.
Mr. Stein?
Yes.
Ms. Donna?
Yes.
Chairman Cohen?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, our next resolution is case number Z24-51917, Armor Block 10.02, Lot 29. Any comments on the resolution? If there are none, if someone would like to make a motion?
I move to approve, Floyd.
Thank you.
I'll second it.
Thank you. Okay, Claudia?
Ms. Chen?
Yes.
Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Schreiber?
Yes.
Mr. Stein?
Yes.
Ms. Donna?
Yes.
Chairman Cohen?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, the third case, Z24-5397 Park Place, Block 28.01, Lot 3.01. Comments on the resolution? Okay, if there are none, someone would like to make a motion?
So moved.
Was that Steven?
Schreiber.
Yes. Second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Eve, you made a second.
Oh, I did.
Would, but it wasn't me. It was Bernice.
Who made the second?
I did.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Okay, Claudia, can you call the roll?
Ms. Chen?
Yes. Yes.
Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Schreiber?
Yes.
Mr. Tenenbaum?
Yes.
Mr. Stein?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, and our last resolution is case Z24-534, 543 Riverside Block 5902, Lot 2. Any comments on the resolution? If none, if someone would like to make a motion?
I'll move a provo, Floyd.
Thank you.
Well.
Second, anyone?
I'll second, starting.
Thank you, George. Okay, Claudia, can you call the roll?
Ms. Chen?
Yes.
Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Schreiber?
Yes.
Mr. Tenenbaum?
Yes.
Mr. Stein?
Yes.
Chairman Cohen?
Yes.
Thank you. It's approved.
Okay, that's the end of the resolutions. We have only two applications this evening. The first is case Z24-538, 195 South Harrison, Block 11,000, 001, Lot 26, in the R5 T-zone. Claudia is the applicant here? Oh, well, first Karen.
Yes, the noticing is in order, and the board has jurisdiction tonight. And Derek, I'm going to swear you in now. Do you swear from your testimony this evening will be truthful?
Yes, I do. Thank you.
Okay. Claudia is the applicant here?
I'm trying to move him over right now.
Okay, thank you.
There he is. Sir, can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
Okay, there he is. Do you have anybody else that you need to bring into the meeting, or?
Yes, I have my designer and next door neighbor, they are also online. One is Dan Burke, the other is in Caswell. They should be online as well.
Can you speak a little louder, please?
Okay, so I said, my designer, Dan Burke, is online, and my next door neighbor in Caswell is also online.
Thank you.
Well, I think your neighbor will come on on the part of the public comment.
Okay, yeah.
Mr. Burke is over now. Okay, thank you.
All right. Will you be making the presentation this evening?
Yes.
Okay.
Steve, do you want to hear from Derek first?
Yes, that's what I was going to say, before we hear from the applicant. Derek, can you summarize your memo? Please?
All right, thank you. Mr. Wu and his wife, Ji Lu, are the owners and applicants of 195 South Harrison Street. It's located in the R5 T-zone in the former Princeton Township. Subject lot is non-compliant with regard to the required 21,780 square foot lot area. The existing lot is 3,876 square feet. It's not compliant with both the lot width and the lot frontage requirement of 100 feet. They are both 25 feet. And that's the property itself, the house is not complying with respect to the required 15-foot side yard setback, it's zero. And the left side required setback is 15, and the existing is 3.5. The applicant is proposing to construct a nine-foot by 34-foot nine parking space in the front yard. The property currently has no parking on site. The parking violates the required 25-foot front yard setback. The proposed setback would be zero. I just note that if you've looked at the property there, are trees on the adjoining property to the south that are overgrown and will restrict visibility while exiting the proposed parking space? The applicant should advise how this issue will be addressed. If the project is approved, a street opening permit will be required from the municipality, and the applicant has requested consideration under the C1 variance, and that's my memo. If you have any questions, glad to address it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions of Mr. Berger? Okay.
Mr. Wu, we'll swear you in. And Mr. Burke, can, yeah, unmute yourself. Mr. Burke, you're the architect of record, is that right?
Yes.
All righty. And do you both swear or affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful?
Yes.
Thank you.
And Mr. Wu, you can begin.
All right, initiate my screen. All right, see my slides?
And Mr. Wu, did you prepare these slides?
Yes, did you see my slides?
All right. And can you tell me how many slides there are, because we'll make that an exhibit for you in this proceeding?
So I have this set of slides as my exhibition exhibits that I'm gonna represent.
All right, so we'll make this exhibit A1. All right, thank you.
So, this is application for off-street parking at 195 South Harrison Street. So we live at 195 South Harrison Street, between Western Way and Huddersfield Avenue. So we have been living here for over about nine years. So this is the mark that indicate where our house locates.
Nice people.
Okay, there are 23 houses on this block. Some are single-family homes, others are duplexes. But we are the only one that does not have off-street parking. So what does that mean to park day and night on this section of Harrison Street? So this is the top-down view of the segment of the street. So Harrison Street is one of the main roads in and out of town, and its traffic has been steadily increasing over the past years, especially after the pandemic. So Harrison Street narrows a little bit in this section, with basically no room left to get in and out of a car parked on the street amid the traffic. These are the yellow boxes indicates the parking space that we are allowed to park. So as I become hesitant to use our car parked on the street, especially after my wife has gone through a hip surgery this year, and is so to move. So off-street parking also has resulted in damage to the cars of ours and the neighbors over the years. Many are just hit and runs. So for all these reasons, our neighbor, which indicates in this red box, who shared the same duplex with us, they applied C1 variance for parking space and got approved in July 2021. So we like to do the same. So here are some pictures of some car accidents that those cars are parked on the street in front of our house over these years. So they caused some total loss, caused some damaged panels, some side mirrors, all these kind of things. And then my wife had a hip surgery surgery in April this year. She's still in recovery and is given a disabled parking permit. So this is the evidence of his, of her surgery, and this is the parking permit until November next year. Here's some positive current criterion that we want to present. So on the left two pictures are the top-down view and the front, frontal view of our property. So you can see that our property is landlocked by the property line on two sides, with no easement from neighbors. And on the right is our public survey. Can see the size and the shape of our property lot means it is impossible to build a parking space that is compliant with the township's zoning coordinates. Again, our house is the only one without off-street parking on block. So here are the, some pictures of our neighboring properties that have parking in front of their house. Particularly, our next-door neighbor who shares the same duplex with us, because they have application approved by the board in July 2021. So this picture, bottom right picture, is the air parking lot just next to us. So we'd like to do the same to have a parking spot in our front yard. So here is our proposal. So we'd like to construct a parking space for nine feet by 34 feet, 9 inches to fit two mid-sized passenger cars of ours that land vertically leaving about four feet in between. Here is the two cars that are designed for this parking lot. So the proposed parking space will take only 315 square feet. That means the new impervious coverage for the property will be 31.01% well below the 61.5% requirement. And as there is no stormwater management is required because it is under 400 square feet. Also, as indicated by the red dots here, our neighbor of 199 has kindly agreed to remove the shrubs on the property line that will block the view when our cars back out. So our proposed parking space, these are negative criteria. Our proposed parking space is a narrow strip alongside and very close to some overgrown old bushes on the property line between 195 and 199. And the parking space is designed to be nine feet by 34 feet, 9 inches, which means there is still more than half of the front yard left with our property lot width being 25 feet. So the design makes it makes only minimal visual impact with the parking space. So here, the year-old drawing is my really rough rendering of the proposed parking lot, what takes place, takes place in our front yard. And with the proposed parking space, we can remove two cars of the busy, narrow segment of the street. This not only can improve our own safety, but also help free up the space that will benefit the safety of the public, of the public that use that road. Also, as seen on this left figure, there is a fire hydrant between two on-street parking spaces in front of ours, 195, and our next, next-door neighbor, 199. This parking, this fire hydrant has only nine feet and 10 feet on each side between these two parking spaces. That means, and these two parking spaces are often occupied, which makes the access to the fire hydrant very difficult. So with our proposed parking space in our own front yard, township can reclaim the on-street parking space, making the fire hydrant easier to access in case of a fire hazard. So with the proposed on-premise parking, it is now possible for us to purchase an electric vehicle which will benefit renewable energy use. And that's all the pre, for the presentation, thanks.
Mr. Wu, did you want to present anything from Mr. Burke?
Uh, no.
Because I make a, one comment.
You can't, Mr. Burke, just again, from your licensed architect in the state of New Jersey, correct?
Landscape architect, yes.
Landscape, thank you very much.
Yeah, so on this, on the drawing on the screen right now, on the left side of the green car and the right side, those two L-shaped gray figures are low stack stone retaining walls, just to hold the grade because the property slopes. So we have to have something to hold the soil back once we would make the cut for the driveway to go in there. Just, just wanted to make that clear that that's what those are.
How tall are they?
At the top of this, of the, as they go towards the house, they basically get about four inches high, and down by the sidewalk, they'd be about 15 inches high. It's pretty much the same situation that the connected neighbor has at 193.
Okay.
They have stacked stone walls also.
Thank you. Okay. Mr. Wu, do you have anything to add?
No, I guess my neighbor from 199, she's a, she should be online, and she can testify that the tree could be, can be removed.
You've indicated on your drawing that you're going to cut back some of the landscaping to make, to increase your visibility backing out?
That's right.
Okay. All right. Okay, if neither you or Mr. or your landscape architect, Mr. Burke, have anything else to add? If it's okay with you, we'll open this up to the public?
I'm okay.
Okay, so at this point, we'll open this up to the. Okay, so at this point, we'll open this up to the public. Claudia, is anybody here, did they want to speak?
Steve Michael Floyd.
Yes, please, sorry.
Uh, although, you know, he had offered his neighbor to put on the record that they will, you know, lower or eliminate the concern that Derek expressed. I personally like to have it on the record.
Okay.
Since it's in Derek's memo.
Okay.
Especially. So I request that you let the neighbor speak, testify.
That's fine. It's a public hearing, they can do that.
Oh, I meant as part of the presentation.
Oh, as part of the presentation?
And the application, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I see Ms. Caswell, we just, you need to unmute yourself, Ms. Caswell. There you go. We just need to swear you in. Do you swear affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful?
I do.
And you reside at one ninety-nine South Harrison, you own?
Yes, that's right.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay, please begin.
I very much support this proposal. I think it makes a lot of sense for all of the reasons that my neighbor indicated in terms of their own safety and in terms of the street safety. It also makes sense for both halves of the duplex to have an equivalent access to off-street parking. The greenery in question is really large holly bushes. And it is completely fine with me for us to remove a couple of them at the front. They're all grown together, so it looks like one enormous hedge, but it's a bunch of discreet holly bushes. And we've discussed either significantly cutting back or removing enough at the front so that it doesn't block any visibility as they're backing out.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, are there any questions of this witness? Okay, thank you very much. Okay, well, we'll go back to executive, to the public hearing portion. Claudia, has anybody indicated they'd like to speak on behalf of this application?
There are no hands.
Okay. All right, so we'll close the public portion of the hearing. Mr. Wu, before we go into executive session and we talk amongst ourselves, do you have anything you want to add in closing?
Just like to thank the board of our, and also Mr. Ridge and Claudia for reviewing and handling this case.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Board, we're going to go into executive session, comments on the application?
I, I do have a question, and it's I, how much trouble, I guess, would it be to back into these spaces so that when you come out, you're coming out headfirst, not back first? I mean, that road is so jammed, backing out into traffic would really make me quite anxious. And the question, I guess, is what do other people do on the street? Do other people back in and how difficult would that be?
So we are experienced drivers for many years, and we are no exception. Saying the other neighbors that have the same situation on that side of the road. And one plus side of our situation is we are on that side of the road with extra space for the parking, the original on-street parking, that give us more buffer room to get in and get out of the street. So that helps us better than the parking space on the other side of the road.
Well, I mean, it's not directly relevant to the application, but was just curious.
No, it's a good, it's a good question to ask, George. Are there any other questions of the applicant or the applicant's witnesses or the neighbor?
I move we approve the application with the stipulation that the shrubbery be removed to a safety point.
I second the motion.
Could I just ask a question, please?
Yes, please.
Just visually looking at the area of the vegetation to be removed, it looks like it's sufficient, but I would just like to visit the site with the land use engineer and confirm with a site visit that it's acceptable from a safety point of view. It looks like it is, but I just want to double check for safety's sake.
No problem, I think it's a good idea.
Thank you.
I agree.
Okay, that's all right with you, Stephen?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
And is it a condition that they need to get the road opening permit, or is that?
I mean, that's a requirement to open a
Anyway, okay.
You can put it in there, it doesn't hurt, they've laid out for him what he needs to do.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Wu, are you okay with our zoning officer visiting the site to look at the landscape?
I'm okay with that.
I'm happy to meet John Sykes at your convenience, so.
Sure, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. You made a motion, Stephen?
I did.
Okay, do we have a second?
Yes, Mr. Tenenbaum.
Mr. Tenenbaum, good, thank you. Okay, can you call the roll, please, Claudia?
Ms. Chan?
Yes.
Ms. Colton?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Schreiber?
Yes.
Mr. Tenenbaum?
Yes.
Mr. Stein?
Yes.
Chairman Cohen?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wu.
Thank you.
Mr. Wu, can you stop sharing your screen now?
Yes.
Okay.
There we go, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, our last case this evening is case Z twenty-four dash five sixty-three ninety-five Library Place, block twelve point oh one, lot eight. Karen, is the noticing in order?
It is, and the board has jurisdiction to hear the case.
Okay, thank you. Derek, can you give us your memo, please?
Yes, sir. Noriko Otto is the owner of ninety-five Library Place, and Brett and Jean Schaefer are the contract purchasers and applicants. They are seeking a floor area variance pursuant to NJS forty colon fifty-five D dash seventy D four to permit the construction of a small infill two-story addition. A C one variance is requested from the required setbacks and height to setback ratio to permit the expansion of an existing dormer and the construction of an associated second-floor roof deck on the rear elevation. The property is located in the R one B zone in the former borough, and the subject lot is noncompliant with respect to the required twenty thousand square foot lot area. The existing lot is fourteen thousand feet, square feet, and the lot width requirement is one twenty-five, whereas the existing is seventy-five four feet, excuse me. The existing house is noncompliant with the required ten-foot smaller side yard setback. The existing's two point eight four. It's not compliant with the required thirty-foot combined side yard setback. The existing is twenty point zero five, and it's noncompliant with the height to setback ratio, it's one point five to one. It's not compliant on the southern elevation, and it is noncompliant with the proportional floor area ratio requirements thirty-one point seven five and the existing's thirty-eight point one six. The project the applicant is proposing is a two-story addition in the existing void of the home near the rear of the dwelling on the northern elevation. The existing Bilco basement entry doors will be removed and reconfigured outside of the proposed addition. The proposed sixty-three square foot first floor addition will be utilized as a powder room and the approximately fifty-four square foot second floor addition will expand an existing closet. This addition does increase the floor area ratio from the existing thirty-eight point one six to thirty-eight point nine seven. They're seeking a D four variance. And then they also have some C one variances requested associated with an existing dormer located on the expansion of an existing dormer located on the rear elevation of the house and the addition of a roof deck with an entry door. Dormer and the deck require variances from the side yard setback and the height to setback ratio. The dormer required side yard setback is ten feet, the proposed is four point nine nine feet. And the side yard setback for the roof deck is also ten feet, the proposed is four point three seven. And the height to setback ratio requirement is one point five to one, and the proposed is one point five to zero point three eight. That's a synopsis of my memo. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to try to answer them.
Board members, any questions of Mr. Bridger?
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay. Mr. Kennedy, I see you here. Are you representing the applicant?
I am, thank you, Mr. Chairman. If we could also, in the audience, should be Glenn Fries, our architect, if we could bring him over as well.
He's already there, but he's
Thank you.
His camera is not on.
One step ahead of me, thank you so much. So thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, and Mr. Bridger for hearing us tonight, and Mr. Bridger for your memo overviewing this. I am here on behalf of Brett and Jean Schaefer, recent purchasers, actually one correction from Derek's memo, which was correct when he wrote it, actually, but no longer correct. We started this application with our applicants as contract purchasers living elsewhere in Princeton. Excited that earlier this month, they actually became the owners of ninety-five Library, consolidating their interest as owner and applicant, and very much looking forward to making some minor changes to this historic property to fit the needs of their family. As you'll hear from our architect and applicant, a very small, dare I say, de minimis increase in floor area by filling in a small unutilized portion that's not visible from the street or really any neighboring property, filling in a void to give them essentially a powder room on their first floor that is much needed for the home and to reconfigure their second-floor bedroom. Currently, it's cut up with a bunch of very small, difficult-to-use spaces and rooms. This would allow a much more usable layout on both floors in ways that respects the historic integrity of the home without any detriment or noticeably from any of the neighbors. As Mr. Bridger said, this property is undersized by about twenty-five percent already, while in keeping with the size and stature of homes on Library Place over the floor area ratio that is permitted, less so over than many of its neighbors, but still over. So even a small change, the sixty-three square feet on the first floor and fifty-four on the second floor do require D variance, and that is a variance that we do need five votes for, just as a reminder. The other change that requires your attention is in the back of the house, there are existing dormers, an existing portion of the house that is in the side yard setback. You'll see that the house is uniquely angled and interestingly was designed perhaps for an artist who was very keen on making sure that the very large window in the great room of the home lined up with the sun for artistic purposes, which means that unfortunately it is not parallel to the, or perpendicular to the street. And as the house reaches the back of lot, gets much closer to the neighboring property, hence the existing setback issues. The modifications to the back essentially respect that stepping and are kind of being placed in areas where already there are setback incursions naturally from this home, where it was always built historically and kept. But by increasing the size of the dormer slightly, it does exacerbate or intensify that variance condition that's already there. We hope you'll see that these were done very tastefully with a minimal impact of the rear of this property, so while you won't see any of these from the street, directly behind them, you'll see it's kind of a personal parking lot, and their neighbor to the right is well-screened, and this backs up to their parking area as well. With that, I'd love to introduce our now-owner applicant, Brett and Jean, to briefly or quickly introduce themselves.
Excellent, thanks so much.
And I just need to swear both of you in. Do you swear affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. No, thank you everyone for taking the time tonight. We've been Princeton residents for seventeen years. We're actually calling it, we're zooming in from our current home today, which we've been living before our oldest daughter was born. And most recently, we've been looking to make a move toward closer to the western side of town, and we feel very fortunate that we found this unique home on Library Place. I think we've been very attracted to the beauty of Library Place as well as the history. And our goal with this home is to really beautify the outside, maintain the historical structure, the appearance, while increasing the curb, improving the curb appeal. But at the same time, as we did a review of the home, we recognize that the interior, we want to restore most of it, but also there's modernization that would require, and hence for the variance request. We feel fortunate to be working with a great architect, Glenn Fries, and contractor, Aloeway Construction, who have worked on many homes within Library Place, and I think also have a great appreciation for, we have for the history. So as Ryan said, the house has a unique layout in the back, which is, you know, as we determined, it's very difficult to see from the front of the road, but a unique layout and this fill-in would really help us. It would effectively give us a usable powder room on the first floor. And as Ryan said, we could have a master suite on the second floor where we can enjoy instead of multiple kind of cut-off smaller rooms and bedrooms.
Thank you so much, Brett, Jean, much appreciated. One, just a quick question for you before I see if the board has any questions or, you know, kind of ask you to take your seats back again. I know you reached out, we reached out to the neighbors with some friendly information and copies of the plans and things like that. Have you heard negatively from anyone or any concerns or complaints about the program?
No concerns, and it was an ironic coincidence. I was at a meeting for a club I'm a member of earlier this week, and I met the across-the-street neighbor for the very first time. And she had received our notice in the mail, and she was very excited to know that we were moving in across the street and excited about the work we were doing in the project, and only had positive things to say, so I was very happy. I didn't know her at all, and we had a very positive first meeting, so that was a nice surprise.
Excellent introduction to the, back to the neighborhood.
She's the resident of ninety-four Library, so right, our road neighbor right across the street.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, unless there are any questions for the applicants, I'd be happy to move on with our, to our architect.
I just have one very quick question. When was the house built?
Nineteen oh five.
So did it precede the two houses adjacent to it?
Good question.
Just out of curiosity.
No, we'll learn. We've been, some of our neighbors have shared us some of the history, which is very interesting. I understand most were built around the same time, but it may have been there before some of the other properties.
Okay, all right, just, I used to live at one forty-four Library.
All right.
Forty years ago. Okay, please continue.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, I'll remind our architect to note that we did look, there was some information put together when the former borough was exploring, creating a historic area district for the Morven Tract area, and we did look through some of that information, and we're surprised to find little information about this home in particular, to be honest with you. But I'll let Glenn speak to that a bit. So, Mr. Fries, if you could introduce yourself and give the board briefly the benefit of your background and credentials so I can have you accepted as an expert here tonight.
Mr. Fries, let me just swear you in first. Do you swear affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful?
Yes, my testimony will be truthful.
Thank you.
So Glenn, if you could give a bit of your professional background and credentials for the board?
I'm a professional architect and a professional landscape architect in the state of New Jersey. I went to graduate school at the University of Virginia, which taught me the historical importance of good buildings with good structure. Been doing this for forty years, and I know I've seen a lot, I've done a lot, and we're getting good at it. This job, a pre-existing non-conforming lot, where they built the building on the True North Arrow.
Excuse me, Mr. Fries.
Yes.
One thing, you said you were licensed in New Jersey?
Yes, New York, Connecticut, several states.
Okay, well, we'll accept you as an expert. Thank you, please continue.
The house was built, and I can't remember the names, but Uh, the house was built, and I can't remember the names, but was built for an artist. And he wanted north light, perfect north light. So there's a big studio window in the great room that points directly north. Well, they got that room right, but then as they started moving the building and building the building back towards the back of the lot, they get closer and closer to the side yard property line. And then they would notch it and then they go back further and then notch it. So there's about three notches in the back right against the property line. So there was very little that we could do on this building because it's pre-existing non-conforming. There was very little we could do without asking for your support. So we're here to ask for a very minimal request of sixty square feet on the first floor and fifty square feet on the second floor for the variance. And the dormer variance that we're requesting is also very minimal because if you look at the pictures that Ryan will shows in a minute, you'll see that the dormer is actually less than the larger main roof of the house. So it's not infringing on anything. It's just a requirement that Derek and I thought we should, uh, go to you for.
And, uh, with that, if it's, uh, please, the board, I'll share my screen. We can go through our slides. I believe there are sixteen of them, uh, this evening.
Like that mark is exhibit A one.
That would be wonderful. Thank you so much. So, uh, Glenn, I'll start taking you through first, uh, um, on slide two here, we've got a, uh, the zoning map showing, uh, the R one former borough zone that arrow starts to point to the the property here at ninety-five Library Place. Is that right?
That's correct.
Zooming in a little further, here's a neighborhood map. Library Place, uh, to the left here and, uh, some other streets, uh, Stockton and, uh, uh, headed into downtown that everyone's, uh, likely familiar with. Is that, is that right?
That looks right.
All right, now we get a little closer. You can see, uh, the rest of the neighborhood coming together here in in focus. That's the subject property in in outlined in blue there. And I'll perhaps note, uh, behind it, I guess, right up on their property line is, uh, I guess a parking lot for the, uh, neighboring users there. Is that right?
That's the parking lot for Morven, yes.
The next, as we zoom in here, uh, kind of changing our orientation, uh, I guess you you can start to see the unique uh, orientation of the house, uh, as it, you know, not perpendicular to library, but I guess designed to to really truly be aligned, uh, uh, with with the like that, uh, the artist that this home was built for initially wanted. Um, I'll note the red arrow, we're going to try to be consistent in in showing you the two parts of this program, uh, that is being implemented. Red is the small infill area and yellow is the location of the dormers that we're going to talk about. We're going to, we tried to color code them that way to keep things consistent so we can, we can track those changes. We show the plans. Uh, Glenn, also just before we leave this, um, this slide, I guess we're this back area here, this is already the part that is very close and in the existing setback that you were describing for as the house steps back.
How it gets to that property line and that just keeps hugging it with step backs and you'll see it in the floor plans in a little bit.
Uh, and then finally just note, you know, from these aerials, uh, the portion of the neighboring property to the right that I guess is closest to what we're talking about is their driveway and, uh, parking area, uh, with there's a a a significant fence and a lot of screening between the two as well. From the photo, you can see the the trees.
Yes, and those large trees, yeah.
All right, uh, next slide again, where we'll try to keep consistent with the red and the yellow, uh, but Glenn, I guess on top, that's the existing, interestingly stepped floor plan and that red area is the part that, uh, we're proposing to fill in, uh, with, uh, some additional, uh, I think you said sixty-three square feet on the first floor and fifty-four on the second floor, uh, square feet of living area.
That's correct.
And then.
It's in the back of the house. I don't know what the original idea of it was, but it it makes that traffic in and out of the back porch very cumbersome and you can't, you know, use any good space there without filling that in. And the existing, uh, first floor now has a powder room, but it's two feet by three feet and it's very difficult to use.
Uh, reminds me of my own, which I apparently legally cannot call a half bathroom due to the lack of sink. So I certainly understand the the desire to to make things, uh, uh, even small things, uh, usable. Uh, and then on the bottom, this is the rear uh, elevation of the home and yellow circled is the, uh, proposed modified dormers that we're going to be talking about.
That's correct. And as I said earlier, it's much smaller than the existing main roof. So it yeah, nobody's going to see the difference between us.
And and this feature is or is stepped back further from the property line, um, than the nearest part of the the home. So the the home actually to a setback is about two point eight feet. That's the existing condition. Uh, this is, uh, I believe, uh, four point nine, and we'll get to the details when we get to the end, but it's further step back.
That's correct.
So here again, sticking with our yellow arrows to try to talk about the the rear portion here, you talk us through a little bit of the, um, uh, this cross section, I think that you did, uh, uniquely shows the parts of the dormers as proposed that are while closer or excuse me, while further away from the rest of the house and step back are, uh, in that setback and in the height to setback area. Is that correct?
That's correct.
We'll talk a little bit of just generally though about the benefit, uh, um, you know, program wise or that that can be, uh, given to this family by by increasing the size of the dormer here.
Yeah, the the back of the house was as very chopped up and small rooms, but by getting the floor area and by o- opening up some of the other smaller rooms, we were able to get enough square footage in the back of the house to do a very nice primary suite. During that development, it became very clear that having a roof deck over the existing porch would be a very nice uh, asset to that master suite or primary suite, uh, giving the luxury of going outside in the morning and checking out the weather. So we moved the primary bedroom from what is on the front of the house to the very back of the house. And then the front bedrooms are now available for the two children.
So then our next slide, we've got the left is the existing rear elevation with that existing uh, dormer feature shown, I guess highlighted in green. And then on the right, the proposed revision, because with the existing dormer still shown in green, so you could kind of see the the slight expansion. Is that right?
Yes, it's a slight expansion. We expanded it about three feet so that we could put a door in there out onto the deck. And then down at the deck level, you can see that the encroachment is very, very minor. Well, you can see with the green line that it's it's a very minor encroachment, but we still need help from you guys to do it.
And, uh, I guess we've got the the required existing and proposed height to setback lines that the that the dormers revised dormers create.
Right. If you see the existing one and then the red line is what was built. So that's existing what was built. So we're still even better than what the rest of the house is.
Now, uh, this next slide, I I wanted to include, uh, this is a portion of the neighborhood character, uh, rules. Uh, it, this does not mean that I don't think, uh, that we don't need a a variance here for the the dormers. But I do wanted to point out that, uh, some effort in the neighborhood character exercise was was put forth to to understand and try to wrap their head around the idea that yes, these projections into height to setback and into setback in certain situations, particularly when they're there already do make sense. Uh, we're not saying that this completely qualifies. Uh, my my take on this provision was they were thinking shed dormers and there is a width requirement of a percentage of roof that can project. Uh, that's not quite what this situation is, and I can understand how this provision doesn't quite fit, but I again just wanted to point out that some effort had been made to recognize that these situations do make sense and are preferable, um, to full-scale renovations and are less, um, uh, detrimental than an actual projection, uh, that the the dormer is is less obtrusive, uh, and and problematic, uh, that provision couldn't solve every problem. Uh, but again, wanted to point out that it is our dormer here comes very close to satisfying this this condition, um, but, uh, perhaps in a future revision of neighborhood character, this type of dormer would would also fit, uh, as an exception. Um, next one, we can go to the what we've been showing with the the red arrow and that is that rear tucked in, um, infill area. So, uh, help me out here. This this photo is is of that rear porch and where their current bill code doors is with a unusual and and not very helpful inset feature, right?
Well, not very useful at all as and the studio window, it faces north and does nothing but fill up with snow and ice in the wintertime because it never gets any sunlight. So it makes sense to make it an indoor space.
Um, and, um, obviously this can't be seen from the street or really anywhere else and.
You can't see it from anywhere, except for this picture.
Uh, so then showing what the floor plans, again, on the left, this is existing. Uh, on the right, this is proposed, showing how that space would be, uh, filled in with the uh, small additional amount of of floor area. Uh, now we've got clipped floor plans here and maybe you could take us through or take the board through a little bit about what you're able to do back here by, um, by inserting this powder room.
Well, we're moving the kitchen up further front. And then this used to be a, uh, laundry area where before the door. So you you would walk through your and go out your back door. So by creating that square footage there, it was enough room to do a nice powder room. And build some closets for pantry and also cubbies for the kids for all their stuff as they will probably use this back door and mudroom most of the time.
And I guess here's the infill on the second floor and what that that allows you to achieve.
Right. Well, it, A, it gives us a little more square footage for the bedroom, primary bedroom area. And then it gives us more square footage. Useful square footage for the primary closet.
Um, next we've got, yeah, sorry. Sorry, Glenn, you you froze up there for a second, but, uh.
Well, that's looking at it from life.
Right, and and as, uh, I I guess as everyone will note that the the parts of the house that we're talking about are are not visible from here or from essentially any any part of of Princeton, other than maybe peering over their fence, uh, from from Morven parking lot.
Uh, that's the only place you could see it from is from this parking lot. That's correct.
Uh, this this view, we flipped it around, uh, uh, library would be on the top of your screen here. Um, again, showing the yellow where the dormers are and red where this infill portion is, uh, meaning to show the, um, both the screening with trees, with the garage, with the fence and, uh, um, for for the most part, particularly for the the Morven property, it's it's screening of that from this property, uh, because it's it's a more of a commercial setting there with the with the parking lot. Um, just through, uh, again, color coding here, uh, the variances needed. Uh, while the smaller side yard is unchanged at two point eight four, that's the that's the house. Um, we did call out and note the dormer at four point nine nine feet and that roof deck at four point three seven feet. Uh, the height to setback ratio again, uh, um, we think the dormer could potentially encroach into that under neighborhood setback, but ultimately we, um, have the, uh, revised uh, number for where that, um, pierces that plane, uh, and then again, the the effect of the already um, for the undersized lot, uh, and again, perhaps a, let's say, dare I say, undersized house for the neighborhood, one of the smaller houses in this row. Um, uh, the addition of the hundred seventeen square feet, uh, uh, changes, uh, the floor area to, uh, thirty-eight point nine seven feet, uh, as as a reminder, uh, since we are talking about a floor area ratio under the Coventry Square case, what we need to do is make sure, or what what needs to be shown is that the site will accommodate the problems associated with the floor area larger than permitted by ordinance. Here with this historic home, uh, and I'll note, uh, the purposes of zoning, particular purpose J is essentially to uh, uh, help with the conservation of homes like this. These modifications essentially promote that uh, rather than encouraging someone to do some more drastic change, uh, to a historic home, uh, and there are we we hope you agree, no negatives. The site is is well-suited to, um, accommodate uh, whatever problems there are from this minor increase, uh, in floor area. Uh, one, the actual footprint of the home isn't really changing. The mass of it is already, uh, e- existing at this size, uh, it's just being filled in slightly, uh, and it's not visible, uh, to the street, uh, uh, from the street, uh, or really any of the neighboring properties as well. The other variances, um, we feel are being appropriate under C one. This site is exceptionally narrow. A hundred twenty-five, uh, is required for width. We're less than seventy-four. Um, while it was designed very interestingly, uh, in in, uh, to step back and try to follow that line and not be parallel to it. Uh, the existing home is, as we said, uh, two point eight four feet from it already. We are staying well proud of that, uh, with these modifications. The addition is well away from the side yard setback. The the revised dormers are, uh, closer to that area, but again, stepped back much further uh, than the existing home. It will a few feet further than the existing home is. We, uh, again, much appreciate your your time, uh, this evening. Hope that, uh, you'll agree that the the next stewards of this really amazing home at ninety-five Library have have done their homework and brought in the right uh, architect to to design very minor and and we think again, not noticeable, but very respectful, uh, slight modifications to this home to allow it to serve, uh, this neighborhood for another hundred fifteen, uh, years in the future. So that, um, again, much appreciated and and happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Board members, any questions to the owner? Yeah, the attorney, the architect? Okay, um, if there are no questions, um, Mr. Kennedy, we're going to try to open this up for public comment. Do you want to say anything?
Uh, just again, thank you. Uh, luckily there wasn't too much of a delay between my my last summary and and now, so I won't burden you with hearing it again. Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, Claudia, we're going to open this up to the pu- for public comment now. Um, Claudia, you're muted, but is there anybody who's indicated they'd like to speak on behalf of this application?
No, there is no hands.
Um, I believe Chris Rice is trying to get online.
He just raised his hand. One second.
Okay.
Hello?
Mr. Rice, um, if you're comfortable, could you give us your address?
Seventy-three Library Place, which is within two hundred feet of the property.
And we will swear you in. Do you swear affirm any testimony you give this evening will be truthful?
I do.
Thank you.
I wanted to say that I agree with the statements made by the architect Glenn Freeze and by Ryan Kennedy and certainly by the Shavers that this is de minimis. Um, I am one house over, so there's a house between my property at seventy-three and ninety-five. I cannot see anything. I cannot see anything from my backyard. Also, I have been on the board of Morven for eight years. I'm the co-chairman of the Buildings and Grounds Committee. So I went over to the parking lot. Which I know will continue to be a parking lot at Morven. And because of the screening, uh, there is no effect. Because of this change to the house.
Okay, thank you. That was very helpful. Anything else you'd like to add?
Happy to answer any questions.
Wish, board members, do you have any questions of Mr. Rice? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, Claudia, anyone else indicating they'd like to speak?
There are no hands.
Okay, alright, we'll uh. Close the public portion of the hearing and uh, again, Mr. Kennedy, would you like to sum up before we go into executive session?
And uh, thank you all for your time here this evening. Uh, best wishes for happy holidays coming up. Uh, this, this very interesting historic home uh takes the right steward and and architect to. To get right. Um, I'm, I hope you agree that they've made some very minor modifications to this that will allow it to be. Used by its next steward for, maybe not, they won't be here for the next hundred years, uh, but, but the house will be. Uh, and these changes allow it to uh be modernized about, but while still respecting. The historic nature uh and and helping with the conservation of a very important uh historic home in a very important neighborhood. Uh, in Princeton. The changes will be visual, visually, um, while compatible. Uh, and well done, imperceptible to anyone and have no negative impact on. Any of the neighboring properties or uh the zone plan and in fact will promote several of the uh uh purposes of zoning, particularly J. Uh, to help to con- with the conservation of historic places under Coventry Square for a a floor area case. Uh, the, the key again is to make sure that site will accommodate the problems associated with the floor area larger than permitted by the ordinance. Uh, the site's already proven that. It it is already um. As are its neighbors, larger than the ordinance would prescribe and these changes uh don't change the site's ability uh. To handle that. Um, reminder though that because it is a D variance, um, we do need. Uh, five votes to to move them uh to the next stage of of stewardship of this home. Uh, and again, uh, happy to answer any questions, but much appreciative of your time as volunteers here uh tonight. Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Okay, board members, we're going to go into executive session. Comments, questions? Well, I'll, I'll start off. I think it's a, I think it's a nicely planned. Modification. I do agree that it won't be visible. And I think there's the increase in the floor area ratio truly is de minimis.
I agree.
Yeah, I agree as well.
Well, with someone, if there are no other comments, if somebody would like to make a motion.
I'll move to proof.
Have a second?
All right, I'll second.
Thank you. Any comments on the motion? Okay, Claudia, can you call the roll?
Ms. Chen?
Yes.
Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Mrs. Schreiber?
Yes.
Mr. Tenenbaum?
Yes.
Mr. Stein?
Yes.
Roman Cohen?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you all so much.
Good, good luck with the house. It's uh, it's really nice.
Thank you very.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you so much for your time.
You're welcome.
Thank you all.
Okay, so I guess uh, that's it for the evening. To all, a very happy holiday and a healthy new year and uh, we'll see you all in January.
Thank you, Steve.
Happy holidays.
Happy holidays.
Thank you.